I am gonna, I'm gonna head and call today's meeting order, uh, six thirty. Um, can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Kuskudis.
Here.
Mr. Vessi.
Here.
Mr. Zambellis, he's absent. Ms. Francis.
Here.
Mr. Rockaway.
Here.
Ms. Early.
Here.
Ms. Swenson.
Here.
Ms. Weaver.
Here.
Okay, at this point, uh, would everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance, please? Okay, at this point, uh, would everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And at this time, please remain standing. Um, we like to do a, a moment of reflection.
Tonight's reflection is one of Easter. And unfortunately, the passing of Pope Francis. Part of Easter is, uh, to learn that we can, uh, argue together passionately, but that we can also disagree with grace. And perhaps tonight, we can share our opinion, but we can, uh, disagree with grace. Pope Francis promoted peace, unity. And he was a champion of the plight of the poor. And I think that this board could always be reminded that we're here for all the citizens of Tarpin Springs, just not those that are able to come, but maybe the poor that always aren't able to represent themselves here. Amen.
Thank you, you can be seated. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have the minutes from our March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting. Um, at this point, I'd like your motion.
Chair, I'd like the motion that we accept the minutes of March seventeen, twenty twenty-five as submitted for approval.
Is there a second? Okay, a motion and second, uh, all in favor? Roll call, please.
Ms. Weaver.
Hi.
Ms. Swenson.
Yes.
Ms. Early.
Yes.
Mr. Rockaway.
Yes.
Ms. Francis.
Yes.
Mr. Vessi.
Yes.
Mr. Kuskudis.
Yes. Thank you. At this point, um, I'd have our attorney, uh, explain to, to those in, in attendance, uh, the quasi judicial announcement and the swearing in of anybody who wishes to offer testimony.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, good evening, my name's Ethan Evans. Um, I'm here to explain in part the, uh, proceedings we're here for tonight. Uh, as the chairman said, it's known as a quasi judicial proceeding. Um, so I'll read you a little blurb here to familiarize. Uh, this is a quasi judicial proceeding where the, uh, planning and zoning board acts in a quasi judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi judicial hearing, it is not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply the law that's already been established. In a quasi judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to previously established criteria contained in the code of ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code of ordinance, then the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this time, if anybody wishes to, uh, speak, testify tonight, if you could, uh, stand up and I'll swear you in, please. Go ra- raise your hand, please. Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony this evening?
I can.
Thank you. There are, uh, two items on, on today's agenda. We'll start with the first one. A resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine conditional use for a childcare center in the T five D district of North Pinellas Avenue, transit code at three oh one North Pinellas Avenue, and application number twenty-five dash twenty-one. And this is also quasi judicial.
Uh, Ally Keane, principal planner at the Planning and Zoning Department. Uh, again, this is a conditional use request under resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-nine, uh, for the property at three oh one North Pinellas Avenue. The property is approximately sixteen thousand eight hundred square feet in size. Uh, it is located in the city's special area plan, specifically the North Pinellas Avenue Character District and the T five D North Pinellas Avenue Transit Zone of the Smart Code. Uh, the applicants are requesting to, uh, get conditional use approval to allow a childcare center and preschool at this location that would provide educational and daycare services to children that are two to five years of age. Uh, the applicant has indicated that there will be, um, nine staff members, that includes a director, assistant director, and teachers, and they're licensed to have up to seventy children at that location. The typical drop-off time is seven AM and the pickup time is six forty-five PM, and those are also the hours of operation for the facility. Uh, the property is outlined here on the screen in red. It's located at the corner of Reed Street and North Pinellas Avenue. Uh, the special area plan boundary is the dotted white line here on the screen. Uh, the, everything to the east of the white line is located in the special area plan, and everything to the west is not in the special area plan. All of the properties along North Pinellas Avenue are in the T five D transect zone, including the special, uh, the subject property. And then, uh, adjacent properties to the west outside of the boundary are in the RM Residential Multifamily District, and then to the northwest, there's some properties in the GB General Business District. Uh, this property has operated as a childcare facility and preschool, uh, for a very long time. Uh, records in the planning department has indicated that as early as nineteen twenty-six. Um, however, that facility ceased operation in twenty twenty-three. The land development code states that if an established conditional use ceases operation for more than one year, they have to file for a new application, so that's why you're seeing again tonight. Um, this use requires a total of ten parking spaces. On site, there is a parking area, their spaces are not striped, but it can accommodate approximately five spaces. Um, however, there is an area for overflow parking on the adjacent property to the north here, um, that the, is under the same ownership and can be used for the proposed use. Uh, one thing to note is both the subject property as well as the overflow parking property do not have direct access on North Pinellas Avenue, um, so that helps with some circulation and potentially provide, or prevents backups on North Pinellas Avenue. Just zooming out slightly with looking at the context. Um, again, the property is in the North Pinellas Avenue Character District of the special area plan. Uh, this is primarily focused on retail development as well as moderate, uh, residential and mixed-use residential development. The areas outside of special area plan are within the residential multi, or residential medium future land use category. Overall, within the very immediate context, it's very mixed use. There are residential, retail, office, institutional, and, um, mixed-use uses very close proximity to this property, so it's really a mixed bag. Um, looking at this aerial picture here, you can see that the existing structure, as well as some of the outdoor play areas, are really oriented towards North Pinellas Avenue that provides a little bit of separation and buffering from the, um, existing residential uses that are adjacent on Reed Street. There's also some existing, uh, mature trees and vegetation, as well as a privacy fence that also adds additional screening and buffering. Uh, looking at your conditional use criteria, um, with regard to the land development code, uh, they are not proposing any sort of modifications to the existing site. It's been utilized as a childcare center for a long time and in the past. Uh, with any application, any future modifications would be required to comply with any sort of local or state, um, codes. Uh, looking at compatibility, um, as I mentioned, the property is in a mixed-use area. Um, it is very common for childcare facilities to be located near residential areas as well as places of employment. This allows for easy access for parents to pick up and drop off their children to and from work. Uh, the adjacent residential homes do have some buffering by the building being closer to Pinellas Avenue and some of the mature vegetation on the property. And as I mentioned, the overflow parking does not have direct access on Pinellas Avenue, which helps improve some of the circulation getting to the site. Uh, the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan as well as the special area plans, uh, North Pinellas Avenue Character District, meaning that it's in a mixed-use district. Uh, the site is within the city's historic district, and the building is identified as a contributing altered structure. Uh, they, again, are not proposing any sort of, um, modifications, but if there were any future exterior modifications, they would have to be reviewed for compliance, uh, with the city's historic guidelines and processed accordingly. Uh, the property is not on an environmentally sensitive site. Uh, looking at property values, uh, the property has been utilized as a childcare center for, in preschool since nineteen twenty-six, and it only recently had ceased op- operation. Uh, and the application, again, is not proposing any sort of changes on the property, so property values are not expected to be impacted. Use is not going to adversely impactings for public facilities or utilities. Uh, it represents efficient orderly development by utilizing a vacant structure in downtown. And then lastly, um, all requirements of the Florida Department of Education will have to be met, and the applicant will have to obtain a local business tax receipt for the operation of the childcare facility. Uh, the use, again, is operating in an existing building that has to, that has been used in this manner for several years, the parking can be accommodated, and it is not expected to adversely impact general health, safety, and welfare. Uh, staff does recommend approval of this resolution. We have two conditions that we are recommending. The first is prior to the issuance of the local business tax receipt, we would like the onsite parking lot to be striped in accordance with the land development code, uh, that would include one ADA accessible parking space. And then the second is the local business tax receipt must be obtained within twelve months. Uh, this application was properly noticed, included one hundred and twenty-four mailed notices, and we have not received any sort of responses or inquiries. And I'm happy to answer questions.
Before we do that, uh, I'd like to ask if there's been any ex parte disclosures or communications with the applicant, or, or any, any, been, anybody do any independent research to us to the site? Um, or does anybody feel they have a conflict of interest, now's the time to disclose that?
I drove by the area.
Okay. I don't think that counts, but that's okay.
Okay.
I think last meeting, I started on this end, so this meeting, I'm starting on that end, so.
Okay, so, I don't have a problem, uh, with what I see. I'm just curious, did you say there would be nine employees? Is that what, was that?
Yeah, the applicant said nine employees.
How many, how many parking spaces?
They're onsite, there's space for about five spaces, but then they have, um, the entire property to the north here that can be used for parking.
Okay. That, that's all I have.
I'm sorry?
That's all.
Okay.
That's all I have.
I have questions on the parking also. Um, you continually say the overflow, but actually overflow to me is above and beyond what's required. What's required are nine. I did drive by, and even in the application, it said there are four to five. If you really look at it, I'm not sure with the ADA if there's really five there or four there. It's pretty small, and twelve feet is what's required for the normal. And being a previous daycare mom, I know that's dording heaven, uh, because I've been there before. But my concern is on the overflow. The overflow is not easy. It's not ADA, it's grass. Um, there aren't sidewalks or anything, so how do we deal with that? And what is the requirement? Because we only have five spots, we need nine. What's the requirement for the land to be like for spots?
Sure, so for shared parking, you can, you can have shared parking on adjacent property within so far distance, that's one, an allowance in the land development code. This would, um, meet that requirement, it's also under the same ownership, so they, they can have that, and that can be used for some of their parking requirement. Um, as far as improvements to the property, um, uh, I think that's up to the board, it's not part of the subject property, but it potentially could be part of the application or conditions.
So it's okay to have, uh, grass turf as a parking lot for a daycare facility? And additionally, no real sidewalk or entrance unless you go across the lot, around, and into the facility?
So the parking, parking lot standards are not necessarily based off of the type of use. Um, so that would, just because it's daycare's facility, that doesn't necessarily play into how the code is written, but I understand what you're, you're saying. Um, the, the property has been used for parking in the past, there's nothing that's necessarily requiring it to be upgraded in any manner, um, but, yes.
So it really shouldn't say can be used, it must say it must be used because you don't have adequate parking in the facility itself?
It's, it's, it's counted as part of the parking, yes.
Uh, yeah.
Some of your questions, you may want to reserve for the applicant, is?
Yes, thank you.
I do not, thank you.
I think it goes, we went this way, so it should run.
Yeah, yeah. All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Ally, for your presentation. Uh, my question is, you have three different lots on this property, are they all under the same ownership currently?
There's technically two, and yes, they're under the same ownership.
And do we have any indication when the facility was previously used for pretty much the same type of operation and, and occupancy? What the capacity of employees and students were at that time?
Um, I would defer to the applicant on that.
Thank you.
I don't know that.
I think we have a quick question, um, based on the previous questions. There are two, two properties. If the owners should decide to sell the own property that's taking care of the overflow, then what happens to the use?
So, so the, let me clarify, the application is for the three oh one North Pinellas, which is the solid red line. The parking area that I have labeled as overflow parking would be for the shared parking agreement. So for, I guess clarity and for, um, assurance for the board, probably one recommendation is you could have a condition to solidify that they have to provide a shared parking agreement, so that basically kind of ties that together. Um, that is a requirement of the code to have the shared parking agreement, but you could add that as a condition just to add assurance.
I think we kind of have to, if there are nine employees, I think we kind of have to.
Yeah, that would be one option.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so, I just, just to reiterate, you said that the use doesn't really apply, doesn't really pertain to the parking, right, as far as the use of the, the building, correct?
The, the di- design standards of a parking lot aren't tied to a certain type of use, correct?
Correct, okay, so just to, I want to put something in perspective, because I think we're getting, we're going down a path that's not necessary. I frankly, uh, I remember when we were going through the, uh, mobile food truck, we, we asked to find all the parking requirements for the distilleries, and I believe whiskey distillery, Tarpon Distillery, I think it was like seven that they were required to have. So, you know, let's just put this into perspective, as far as a daycare, maybe there's not employees, we have the shared agreement across the street, which is more than enough. Um, the daycare employees are the only ones that are going to be there all day, might not even be there all day, and obviously, you know, distilleries are for, literally for people to come for an extended period of time and stay. So I just want to put this into perspective that, you know, we're going down this, you know, for, for actual bars and restaurants on the same strip of land, just, you know, just a few hundred feet down, we have seven spots required for a place for people to come and drink. So, you know, just want to put it a little in perspective, just to clarify, that's, that's seven, right, for the distillery was required?
I can't say it's definitely seven, but the calculation is based off of square footage of a building, so yes.
All right, and nothing's changed significantly since the last time this was in operation, just a little bit over a year ago, right?
No, 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 twenty twenty-three had the same standards in place.
This is more of a, just occurred, like, something that's required because of every
Right, because it lapsed.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, um, I guess it's me next. Um, first of all, this is a conditional use, so if the ownership of the overflow parking should change, and this is only understood by the church?
Mm-hmm, yes.
So if the overflow, and, and obviously, they, the church actually always uses the overflow, but if the overflow ownership should change, then that applicant does not meet the conditional requirements. So that in and of itself should satisfy the fact that, that whether you had a shared parking agreement would be good, but not necessary, because the condition changed, because it's a conditional use. If that, if you lose the parking, the condition changes, and therefore, they would not be able to operate.
Correct.
So, so, I mean, they could go through the ma- you know, the functions of having a shared parking agreement, but they're doing it with themselves, and, and so, that being said. Um, the other question I have for you is need, okay? Um, right now, how many daycares are in that particular area?
Oh, I could not answer that.
I can't, there's only, that's the only one.
Yeah, it's it.
The other one is at Sunset Hills. The other one is at Methodist Church, they have a daycare, I understand. Okay, so, so there's one on the western part of the city of Tarpin Springs, there's one that services the eastern part of the city of Tarpin Springs, but there's, that this would be one that services the residential area and center of Tarpin Springs. Would that be fair?
Yes.
Okay. And with regard to, um, the criteria for employees, is that based on the, the requirements of a daycare with that many students? I think that's regulated, you need, don't you need, I, I don't know, I guess that's a question for the applicant, but, but.
Yeah, I defer to the applicant.
Licensing may require, um, and that may be a condition that we look at, that licensing, based on licensing, the applicant will maintain the, the, uh, licensing required for the number of, of, I don't know, we call them students, but the number of, of, of.
They would have to comply with any sort of state regulation.
Children that, you know, that they, they must follow state requirements as a, as an additional condition. Um, all right, um, I think that's, that answers my questions, I'll let it go, go around one more time, if anybody has any additional comments.
I have one, I wasn't sure what Georgiana said, but there are requirements, it's three parking spots per thousand square feet for a daycare center, which would mean at thirty three hundred approximate heated square foot, or thirty five hundred total square feet, it's going to be at least ten. So that's the requirement for the parking.
For the number of spaces, yes.
Okay.
And I, just like that, that, anything like that would have gone through the technical review committee, correct?
Yes, this went to the.
So it wouldn't be something that would have to come to us to decide?
Yeah, I was just stating the actual design standards of like, you know, like, curbing, striping, that type of stuff of a parking lot is not tied to the use. But yes, number of spaces, we definitely have, um, standards for that.
Okay, without any other staff, I mean, uh, board co- questions, I'm going to go ahead and let the applicant, uh, unless the applicant has a presentation or wants to address any questions, I'll let you, please, your name, your address, and, uh, and, and who you represent.
Sure, no, I, I appreciate the floor and thank you, everybody, for, for giving me the time. Uh, my name's Alex Pappas, I work with Alpha Alternatives, representing the church. Our af- our address is one two threes Tarpen Avenue, suite two two five, downtown Tarpen Springs. Um, so, happy to address any, uh, questions you might have about parking, um, specific to the overflow lot. Just to address, like, directly address the questions that came up if that lot were to convey to somebody else. The church is prepared to enter into a formal lease agreement to license those spaces, so regardless of whether or not the lot would transfer ownership, the lease would continue to exist thereafter, um, at least through the term of that lease, so, um, having said that, if they were to sell one or the other, they would, it's in their best interest to ensure that that lease continues to the benefit of, um, the daycare, because without that lease, it would clearly impair the value, and as it's built right now, the best use is, is as a daycare, so without the parking, therefore, can't qualify as a daycare, a daycare.
Yeah, but, but it, wouldn't that be an internal issue? Because it, it diminishes the value of the church-owned property if they, if they sold that overflow parking, they, the conditional use would lapse and they.
Correct.
So that's an internal, that's an internal mechanism.
Yeah, exactly, and I, I just bring it up to address it directly, because it was mentioned, and also I wanted to alleviate any concern that that would happen.
I, uh, I have some confusion, and maybe you can clear it up.
Sure.
The overflow. Well, first, let me back up and ask you if you were aware of how many parking places are, are legally required to support the daycare center with nine employees?
I'm not, I mean, as far as I understand, um, you know, that's what the technical review committee suggested, and second to that, I'm sure the state's criteria is, is just as rigorous as whatever the city has. Having said that, there's more than enough spaces to accommodate whatever our prospective tenant is looking for, because that's what they told us directly, and they obviously, having operated another, currently operating another facility, have a better understanding, so them engaging with us to sign a lease is. So them engaging with us to sign a lease is a good indication that if they're not concerned, they're going to expose themselves and their security deposit. And I just don't think that's something that they would do, knowing that they would never qualify.
What lease are you talking about? I'm sorry.
We're, I mean, we're negotiating a lease right now, but through those discussions, there's never been one instance where they referenced the parking that was between the subject property and the overflow as.
So you're saying the parking, the additional parking required would be covered by a lease?
Correct, correct.
From, well, the, it would be the, the church that would be entering into a lease.
Correct.
Correct, okay. But you do understand that should that lease ever end or, you know, not be in existence, that then the daycare would not qualify? So it's, it's paramount that spaces be set aside somehow? And you're saying through lease, but set aside somehow to meet the requirement? And I understand square footage is involved, things of that nature as to how many spaces are required. And obviously, I don't know your square footage. I don't know your employee roster, but that's the only catch, I think, for most of us, is just the parking. You need three spaces per one thousand square feet, I believe?
Yep.
So I think that would bring us to about ten spaces.
Okay. So if you have five, then you have to have five more.
Certainly, that's, that's what's contemplated at minimum right now, just between the tenant and the owner.
But is the school going to be temporary or do you plan for it to be permanent?
I don't want, I don't want us to get off track and.
How is that not off track?
No, no, some of these things are landlord-tenant issues and not, when, when, they have to do that internally. If, if they're going to rent it out, if the church is going to rent it out for daycare and it requires so many spaces, then, and they have the overflow parking, it's up to the tenant who's going to rent that space or run a daycare to ensure that they have the spaces they need. Otherwise, if they do not, then they don't. No, then they don't meet the conditional use. If our conditional use says you have so many spaces, okay, and those spaces get pulled away, they violate the conditional use and they get pulled. So.
That's my concern.
Yeah, well, that's their concern. That's between the landlord and the tenant to negotiate. We're just saying, yes, we're just saying you got to have so many spaces, okay? How they get them and what they negotiate is between the landlord and the tenant and not this board to tell or negotiate the landlord-tenant issues with regard to how many spaces they should acquire.
Not necessarily.
They need seven spaces.
Chairman, do you want to, I mean.
If it were ten spaces.
We're getting, getting into discussion, just want to finish questions and then we can do this with the motion.
It's overflow if it's beyond ten spaces.
Next question, next question.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead.
Thanks. Oh, you asking me? I. I forgot your name, pardon me.
Alex.
Alex Justin. There seems to be a bit of focus on the parking. I understand. Now, I'm also a real big fan of childcare and the VPK, so everyone is in there. But that looks like an abandoned lot. Would you agree that what's across the street is a parking lot and what's called overflow parking right there just looks like an old lot with the house torn down?
Are you.
Does that look like a parking lot to you?
Are you referring to the overflow parking?
Yep, the one that says overflow parking. Does that look like a parking lot or does that look like a lot that had a house torn down?
I mean, I know the way that it's been used ever since the hall.
Forgive me, I didn't say how it's been used or how long it's been used. I said, does that look like a parking lot? Are there five delineated spaces that could be used for the adjacent tenancy?
I mean, there's no markings, but it's certainly used as a parking lot and.
There, if I can interject, there are wheel stops on that property that delineate some parking spaces for when the church is utilizing that space. So there are some wheel stops.
I can't see those and forgive me for being so direct, but I'm just trying to find out, is it a parking lot or is it just kind of a space that gets used? And I appreciate the conditional use thing, but it seems a little bit loose in its, how it's being used.
So to tie it more directly to the daycare, what's been contemplated is just opening up the fence to allow for direct pedestrian access from the point where you park to enter into.
So, so there's not direct access to the daycare right now?
I mean, they're essentially connected, so as is, they just need to remove a panel of fencing and.
So, so you could appreciate the concern that it clearly says that a daycare of X number of square feet shall have ten spaces. It doesn't say it shall have five plus maybe some. It says thou shalt have ten.
So how many, let's say there was a gate there connecting the daycare to that lot. How many spaces through a formal licensing agreement would be enough to?
It's laid out in the paperwork and the TRC committee says that you should have ten.
Okay, so.
And I would guess, forgive me for being so bold, that there should also be an additional ADA clearly marked spot, even though there is one in the front that you're going to use as a turnaround. It just kind of makes sense, doesn't it?
I don't see an issue with situating the parking lot that way, if that's what's being requested. I mean, and to the extent that however you want to identify the spaces in front that are paved as ADA or whatnot, if, you know, we can only fit two formal ADA spaces there, if that's what's needed, the church is in a position to offer as many spaces necessary to actually reach, reach the threshold that's being requested with direct access through a gate that connects that lot to the daycare.
And would the church be willing to accept as a condition of the board's motion that there is a formal parking sharing agreement in addition to the conditional use that's already there, but something that rides on top of that? Would the church be willing to enter to that agreement and provide that agreement as part of the conditional use application?
Just to be clear, you're, you're referring to a formal lease, right? Yeah, of course.
Did that make sense the way I asked that? You got a couple of nods. Did I, did that make sense?
I'd like to make a motion as it is, as it's written currently, chairman, if we're there. Just as staff has written it.
I, I just, there's one additional concern that I have.
I just want to make sure my motion is heard first before any additional conditions.
All right, you may want to add this to your motion as well.
No, I, okay, thanks.
Okay, if you want to hear me out, if you want to add it.
All right.
Okay.
Did everyone get asked all their questions of the applicant?
And you said something that I think bears probably consideration for a motion is the reason there's a fence around there is to secure the students or the children from any outside.
Sure.
Okay. But if somebody were to park on the overflow lot, because obviously you've got a drop-off and pickup line, you mentioned about putting a gate, or I would not remove a fence panel, but I would put a secure gate on the, on the back to the overflow lot to allow parents to park without having to walk along alternate nineteen with their children as an access point, just for people who wanted to drop off. And because of the drop-off line, because Reed Street is a one-way street and cars park on both sides and you could cause a traffic jam. So if parents wanted to pull into the overflow lot, take their child out and walk them to the daycare, rather than maybe having to walk through alternate nineteen that they would be able to access the property from the gate.
Sure.
Secure gate, is that, that's a rational, I think a rational thought.
Yeah, if that's being requested, I'm sure that can be accommodated. And second to that, I think it's the state's obligation to dictate what's appropriate for licensure for the actual daycare itself. And the intent of that lot, again, isn't necessarily for parents. It's for the employees.
I understand that. I'm just thinking that for, to the extent that if you've ever been down Reed Street, and I have many times, cars park along the street and accessing, and it's a one-way. If there was a drop-off and pickup, traffic could back up on Reed Street so the residents of Reed Street would have a problem.
Sure.
And, and, and George, if you would add that to your motion.
I think it's, I think we've gotten extremely way off track here because parking is not for us to consider. And I want to bring this back to staff. And I'm going a little out of order, but considering where this is heading tonight, I think it's proper. Is, is this our concern? Is this under consideration for us to go and consider the parking considerations? Or is that handled at a level before it comes to us?
So you, you can consider parking as part of your.
Conditional use, I understand that.
But as far as safety and all standards are met.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
As it, from staff's perspective, they comply with the requirements of the code because we allow for shared parking. And they meet that requirement of shared parking based off of the code. However, you can consider different aspects for conditional use.
And, but what I'm trying to say is that it has met all the safety standards and nothing has significantly changed since the prior use of this as it's being considered today, right?
Correct, nothing has changed.
And has, has any of the parents ever complained to you about feeling unsafe or asked for any type of, anything else protection? Have you ever had complaints previously?
I took over management of this property in October of last year. So I can't speak to that. The church has never expressed any concerns of that sort to me. So, and they were the operator prior. So that's as far as I can comment directly to.
Thank you. So I'll, if that's what's going to get this done, I'll amend my motion to add, I guess, consideration of a safety.
There hasn't been public comment, I just want to remind.
We have that public comment.
Oh.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that, no, I didn't, there's nobody here on his side.
What I would say is to say, just where the, the back part that faces the overflow parking, just a gate.
I know, I just think that, yeah. So, I'm sorry, we didn't have public.
That's for the protection of children.
It would be easy for us, wouldn't it? To say, well, they used to do it that way, so we should just keep doing it that way.
So at this point, at this point, unless there's any questions of the applicant, I'm going to go ahead and open up for public comment. Anybody want to speak in favor or against the applicant? Any comments? Thank you. All right, at this point, is there, I guess we've not received any correspondence or phone calls.
No.
Regarding this, okay. So I'm going to go ahead and close the, the public comment. And at this point, now we could go ahead.
All right, well, I'd like to make a motion as it's written and I guess with the consideration of, I don't know how you'd want to award it as a safety.
Basically that they have an access point, a, through a secure gate at the, from the site into the, into the overflow parking.
All right, I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any further discussion?
On that motion or in general?
On the motion.
That's how the procedure works, so we're going to start on my end this time then?
Okay, roll call, please.
Well, we're going to discuss.
Oh, discussion.
Right. All right, so I want to remind everybody that I hope that we, in the future, use the same level of scrutiny for parking for business applicants, such as mobile food trucks and restaurants. Okay, this fits the comprehensive plan, which means in and of itself, what Mr. Kuskuti was, you know, Chairman Kuskuti was mentioning is that we only have one other daycare, okay? And this is not outside research, this is me just living in this community for forty-one years. And I know what the other daycare is because it's the daycare that I went to. It's called the Tarpon Learning Center, used to be Rising Star. That is the only game in town. And we used to have this one, okay? And believe me, if Mr. Pappas thought that this was going to be an issue tonight, you would have had adorable two-to-five-year-old little Greek kids and other kids sitting over there, okay? This was not what he expected tonight. We're out of control up here, okay? So put the condition on it if that's what has to happen. But we need to get in perspective here and, you know, if we're not being taken seriously, we cannot be getting out of line and talking about things that are just not in our purview. So those are my comments. I'm all for it. This is exempt, like we, we have, this is the only second daycare in a town of twenty-six thousand people. Okay, so. All right, and those are my comments. And I'll finish my comments. And so that's why I'm approving this, you know, that's, that's why I'm in favor of this. And if this gets continued, it's an embarrassment.
I, I don't, I don't want to go back and forth unless there's, there's issues with regard to the motion at this point. Okay, what's.
Chairman.
I'm going to call for.
Yeah, just, just that the planning department had the two conditions imposed and also that we brought up the fact that all state requirements be satisfied for the duration of the conditional use.
For the licensing requirements.
Yes.
So my comment and discussion is, first of all, first and foremost, I am not against this at all. However, my thoughts were that we should be consistent and forward-thinking. That was my response. And I was thinking of things like, what if sometime before the daycare goes away, if it ever goes away, the church decides to use that property? Then, okay, and everybody's saying, well, that's their problem. But I think what we need to do is back up and there are parking requirements for businesses, for daycare, for restaurants. And we have addressed those with, with almost all of the changed uses we've discussed. Is there adequate parking? So I think that's my confusion. Shouldn't we have some sort of permanent additional five spaces? You know, that would take care of that issue in the future? That's where I'm coming from.
But this is conditional use, so that's why, nothing's permanent. That's literally what we're considering is conditional. It's not permanent use, it's conditional.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, the parking is a county, Pinellas County requirement as well as a city requirement. Are we here to change what the county or the city is telling us is necessary? Plus, it's not overflow. It is not overflow when it is not above and beyond the requirement. It is a requirement, it's not overflow. It would be overflow if it was beyond ten parking spaces already existing.
I, I think they call it an overflow parking because it's.
Not overflow in this case.
It's.
Can I, can I add, just go ahead.
And just before, just to reiterate what Chairman Kuskuti mentioned earlier when we were not in discussion, is we cannot impose or ever even know what a private agreement, like lease agreements, that is not our job, that we can't enforce them. We, not like, if you remember when we did the Moses Tucker, those are private agreements. We have no business knowing what they say. Those are private lease agreements. We can't say you have to do this. We can't impose how a business operates, okay? We are only allowed to consider what is put forth before us as a conditional use and not to go outside those bounds. They're very clear in a quasi-judicial process. So again, we need to kind of step back, you know, let's remember, same thing with the Cohatch. There were no parking requirements for Cohatch. And honestly, nobody, you know, liked what happened, but, you know, Mayor Kusk, Mayor Vaticius did not have to impose those additional eighteen spaces. He was under no obligation to do so, but he did. So we can't be making issues under things that are just not under our purview.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go ahead and call for the motion. I think you wanted to make one addition, you wanted to make one addition to it in that, that they meet the state requirements.
As well as the two conditions that the planning department imposed.
Fair enough. So there's, there's, there's two additional conditions. One is that they meet the licensing requirements that the state would require for that facility as far as staffing. And two, that there would be an access. I think it would be on the north, the north end of the property into the, what they've defined as the overflow parking. I just call it the additional parking lot. And if you're good with that, amending your motion?
Yeah, I made the motion as, as written by staff, which include those conditions.
Okay, all right. So then I'm going to, I'm going to call for the motion as amended. Can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Swenson? Ms. Early?
No.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
Yes.
Mr. Vessi?
No.
Kuskutis?
Yes.
Okay, next.
Thank you for your time.
Bring the little kids next time with BOC.
Next item on the agenda is ordinance 2025-06, land development. Next item on the agenda is ordinance twenty-twenty-five dash oh-six Land Development Code amendments. This is legislative, remending Article Two of the District Regulation, Section twenty-five dash one-two HB Highway Business, District, Application twenty-five twenty-three.
All right. So this is an ordinance for you all to consider and provide your recommendation to the Board of Commissioners for a land development code amendment to the Highway Business Zoning District. And it is to allow a school of general education as a permitted use in that zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Department received a request from a local church organization. It was the Gathering with Jesus to consider this requested amendment. Staff did review the Land Development Code, as well as the request, and looked at the permitted uses.
I'm sorry, I didn't want to interrupt, but can the attorney, can you propose, do a little bit of a direction here? Because this is a land use amendment and not a quasi-judicial, so a little bit of direction for the board? About how we're to consider this, because it's not a quasi-judicial hearing.
It's a land development code amendment.
Yeah.
Right. So I want, because we not, we're kind of skipping a, he gave an instruction for the conditional use quasi-judicial hearing. And this is not that. So I think we need to, for the board to understand what we're considering tonight, an instruction from the attorney before we, and then also
You don't know?
I'm thinking, I'm thinking about how to word it here.
Well, I mean, because it's different considerations. We don't have to give findings of fact. We don't have to, you know, so I just want to make sure that the board
It's just a presentation, like, public comment. That's all that, that's all.
Well, it's a legislative item.
Yeah.
Right.
It's a presentation and public comment.
But it needs a different instruction for us.
Right, no application, no application of, of fact to law, or, or anything like that. But, um, that, I mean, a different, different process.
I, I think we, we understand. We've been at this a while.
I, I have, we have, but I'm just saying, this is a different, because we have people here tonight for this amendment, but this is not an application. I just want to make
Dinner.
Well, I mean, I just want, the attorney, the attorney has to give those instructions. I'm just trying to make sure that that's clear and it's on the record. It is a legislative item, not a quasi-judicial item. There's no applicant tonight. Thank you.
I said that.
Okay.
That was legislated.
Okay, so, so again, the, we received an application, or a request, I'm sorry, from the, the Gathering with Jesus to consider this amendment. Staff did internally look at this request and determine that that was an appropriate request. And it also made sense for the zoning district that it was requested for. So we did forward this to the city manager, and he did direct staff to prepare the ordinance that's before you tonight. And it does recommend adding the school of general education use as a permitted use by right in the HB zoning district. So to provide you with a little bit of background, historically, schools of general education were really primarily public schools, which were most desirable in areas close to residential neighborhoods. That was most likely the mindset and the decision in nineteen ninety, when the Land Development Code was originally drafted and went into effect. This really allowed for students to potentially walk to school. It also helped with bus routing. But over the years, as you all know, schooling options have really expanded and changed. They allow for now, you know, charter schools. They allow for private schools, religious-based schools, and there's a whole slew of different types of general education. Just for clarity, general education is basically K-through-12 education. These types of schools are a little bit different, and they typically tend to locate along primary transportation routes, because they can serve students locally, as well as in nearby communities. So the walkability aspect isn't as crucial to those types of schools. They also tend to be smaller in scale, and they typically don't offer traditional bus services. So they need different context, essentially, from a public school. The Highway Business District is intended to provide predominantly retail and highway-oriented uses along the major roadways. The HB zoning district is basically found along US nineteen and at the very northern and southern extents of alternate nineteen. That is really the only areas in the city that that zoning district is located. That district currently permits a school of special education by right. And some examples of what a special education school is are vocational and technical schools, as well as instructional schools, like dance, gymnastics, linguistic and drama schools, things of those nature. So after looking at that, as well as some of the conditional uses, like a daycare facility, and seeing the similarities and characteristics, staff did feel like that it was an appropriate addition to the HB district to add a school of general education, primarily because of its similarity to vocational and technical schools. So we felt that it was a necessary update to the code, because, again, it was drafted in nineteen ninety. And these codes are living documents. They have to be amended from time to time. So we do recommend the addition to the code. And in the drafted ordinance, you'll see in Section Two is the Section twenty-five point two, the Highway Business District Standards, which is the strike-through underline. It's very minimal. It just adds the school of general education under permitted uses. And there's just a couple of scrivener's errors that we have updated in there. With that, I'm happy to answer questions about this recommended amendment.
No, no, this time, I get to start.
No, no, no. We started the same. We don't, I'm not
But we're not going back and forth anymore?
No. Well, that's how we did it. We went back and forth last time. You're right. Go ahead. Go ahead.
All right, Ally, thank you for the presentation. We're currently updating the Land Development Code, correct?
It's, it's on the docket, yes. We'll be doing some updates, because that's what follows.
Because that's when we did the comprehensive plan update, that was the next part, right? So you're, that's literally underway, right? I mean, I'm just, I know you're busy, but
Yes.
I, I'm not saying, I'm not saying, are you
Not a full-fledged update, but yes, it is.
This is not being me critical. I'm just, I'm just trying to make a point, okay?
Yeah.
So, before, when we were doing the comprehensive plan, we didn't find that this was a necessary change. Did we? I mean,
Not, not a specific change, no.
Okay, I'm just saying, necessary. That wasn't necessary until apparently now?
It was a request.
Okay, but necessity and having a request, I mean, necessity is almost, I mean, how would you define a necessity? A need, right?
Yeah. Well, we get amendments requested from time to time.
I'm just saying, but it wasn't when we did the comprehensive plan, which goes hand in hand with the Land Development Code. In the comprehensive plan, we didn't find that this was a necessary change to make based on community needs and everything that we did during the comprehensive plan, correct?
No, but what I will say
No, no, was that a no?
Can I, can I specify?
No, I just said yes or no. It's, I'm asking the question right now.
But it's not a yes or no answer.
But I say yes or no question.
Chair, I would ask that.
Okay, but I'm
You, you control how staff answers.
I'm not, I'm just saying.
You know what?
If, if staff wants to elaborate on the bill, please let, let her make sure the question.
It's inappropriate for you to be interrupting right now, so.
No, no.
Go ahead.
Let her answer the way she wants.
I just want to clarify that the HB zoning district is compatible with the retail and services land use category, which was one of the amendments and updates that we did in the code. And the public, semi-public use falls in that category, which is, this use falls under that category. So it's an appropriate type of use under the comprehensive plan. I just wanted to make that point.
The F D T, the F D O T overpass, you know, that's been considered, where is that going to necessarily go? If it ever comes to be.
I don't, I don't believe that the final design has been decided at this time.
But it would be near Tarpon Avenue, correct, would you say?
I, I can't say what the final design is.
So, the other, I want, question I had was, do you know how many general education schools are on US nineteen currently?
There are several schools.
No, there's two.
Up and down.
There's two, there's two zones that are general education. One's in Dixie County, and one's in Newport Ritchie, and it's an online school. So I just wanted to ask you that. So currently, but in Tarpon Springs, there are no general education schools zoned on the very small strip that Tarpon has on US nineteen. Is that correct?
They're not allowed currently.
They're, right.
Under the zoning district, so.
And no one, so no one's ever asked for this before?
No.
So, but now it's a necessity? Just, I'm just clarifying that, okay? And the, as far as the, as the city manager directing this, staff to do this, what was his direction?
How the process works is when we received the request, we look at it internally, determine whether or not we think it's an appropriate request.
Right.
And then we go to our, our director, which is the city manager, to say, do you want us to process this? He looked at it, and he said, yes, go ahead and process it. That's the direction.
And he said it was okay, actually. I made it a public records request to say that it was okay to submit to the commission, is what he said. That was
Well, that's, the process is, it goes to you first, then the commission. That's how the ordinance works.
Right, but as far as his response, so, so those are the questions I have for you. Thanks.
Okay.
Next. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Vessi?
Is, I, I just want to, I just want to ask, what are we actually looking at here? We, we trying to prepare for someone to make an application? Is that what's next?
No, so this came about when the, the Gathering with Jesus contacted us to inquire about zoning. They are located on US nineteen. They wanted to expand to allow for a school with their church. We told them that that is not allowed in that zoning district. There really was no avenue to allow it. So they submitted a request to, for us to consider the amendment to the code. So that's what we have processing. So really, it's to look at the, it's not specific to their church or anything at all, or their application. It's looking at the Highway Business District in the Tarpon Springs to determine whether or not a school of general education is appropriate in that zoning district.
So it's a precursor to a possible application?
Yes.
Which we would have to consider at the time that it comes up. So nothing, this isn't really determining anything specific tonight, just
Well, for clear, for clarity, how this is drafted now, a school of general education is proposed to be a permitted use. So the actual use would not necessarily come before you. If they were to do any sort of site work that might require a site work plan, that would come before you.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
I have a question.
Yes.
Oh, did you have?
Yeah, one quick one. So when the site work plan would come across, I mean, I drove by this one too. What about, you know, traveling, you know, into the parking lot and exit? That's a terrible area to begin with on US nineteen. Would there be, you know, any kind of criteria as to
That would be on the site plan.
That would be on the site plan then. Okay. Thank you.
My question is, why permitted use as opposed to a conditional use change?
That, that was, when we looked at the similarities to schools of special education, which is already a permitted use in that district, we felt that they were, they had the similar characteristics, specifically how it calls out vocational and technical schools. We thought that those were very similar, and we felt that it was appropriate to put under permitted use.
When, when you say schools of special education, I'm trying to figure out what that, what do you mean by, what does that entail?
Sure. So I'll, I can read you the definition that's in the Land Development Code. A school of special education is a school devoted primarily to giving instruction in special subjects, such as a vocational, technical, music, art, dancing, drama, linguistic, religious, business, secretarial, and similar subjects.
Can you do us a favor and pull up the Land Development Code? I have a really hard time finding it online.
I can try to. We're having some issues with the
You can't just Google it. It's not that easy. The only way I, I could understand the difference between special education and general education is just by the email that the gathering sent in the application, but I, I'd like to see our Land Development Code right now, in front of, and, and I'd like that. In the future, I would like to see the Land Development Code as it's written.
It is in the, it's in the draft ordinance.
It is also in the memo, chief.
Okay, but I'm just saying, I, I would also like a link for the, for us as the board, because I cannot find the entire Land Development Code to save my life online. It is not easy. It's, it's a very important document, so it should be a little bit more accessible. And my next question is, why can't this, and again, this, I'm going to have some comments on this for, after the motion is made, but what is, why can't this be under special education? Why does it have to be under general? It's already relig, because, because what we're taking is, we're taking the word religious and putting it under general education. Is that correct?
No. General education
Doesn't have religious in it.
Correct.
But it will under this amendment.
General education is generally K-through-12 education. That's the main difference. It's not a specialized subject, providing your typical subjects.
So the word religious has nothing to do with any of this change at all?
Correct, yeah. It has nothing to do with it.
But the direction from
You can have a general education school that has a religious basis to it, but providing your, your K-through-12 education, that's what puts it into the general education.
Because this is an amendment, we can also request that it not just be permitted, that it be conditional?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay, and that just like to remind, and I do, because I, I did a public records request, and nobody asked about any external communications, but I did, that's actually just through our own thing. So I didn't talk to anybody but our staff. And so Renee, in the response to the email, in her request to the city manager, said, I would request, she goes, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to change the zoning, but maybe under a general, a permitted or conditional use. So I'm a little confused as to why it's being proposed to us as only permitted, because that was not Renee's email, and that was not her instruction that she asked the city manager, and I can show it to you, or I can send
I, I know, I know what you're speaking of. I
Well, I have it, so, but I just, this is extremely important, because this is like on a major highway. So I have the, you know, from your director, her recommendation that got the approval from the city manager said, general or conditional or permitted. She didn't, or permitted by right. She didn't say permitted by right only.
And, and when we went through the full analysis and prepared the ordinance, we had a discussion
That's not how it was presented.
We processed it as a permitted use, but it's up to the board how your recommendation
Right, I understand, Ally, but what I'm trying to say is that we're not getting the full picture, and I'm not going to just sit here and let you just speak lies. And that's what I'm trying to say.
What section? Do you want me to pull up on the Land Development Code?
I just, can you just show it, I mean, the entire Land Development Code?
There you go.
Yeah, just, I want to see like where it is.
There's the Land Development Code. And you can access it just for general, for everyone, if you go to the city's website under the document library, there's a link to the Land Development Code.
I don't have any more questions.
Mr. Vessi, before, I, I make, I'd like to make a comment first. I think, I think when we get back and forth, it does no purpose. I think we need to treat everyone who's speaking with, with a little bit of grace, okay? Mr. Vessi, you got a question?
Ally Keen.
Yes.
Unfortunately, I'm going to follow up on the difference between special and general. Hey, I think that this has shown something that might be, this is very important, obviously, but we might be able to solve some other things, too, is that I have been trying to carefully read and figure out the difference between general and special. They're so close, use all the same words, that it's almost like they are the same thing, but somehow they got divided up. Now, I don't have a dog in either race, so I think that it's probably a good idea. But if we were going to go so far as to propose or, or okay an amendment that's going to go forward, maybe we could clean up the whole topic altogether. I don't know what that is. My first suggestion would be get rid of the two categories and make them one, because they certainly sound like one. I think there'd be a fair argument that they could just refer to themselves as special education. It says parochial, religious, five days a week. Of course, the only good definition actually comes from the gathering's letter. I couldn't find one better for us. So it's not so much to question is that perhaps that, A, getting a definition that we might understand since we are proposing adding an entirely new use, that I can only speak for myself, that I don't think anybody's against. But maybe, maybe more importantly, would be cleaning up this special and general, getting just education, and then we're just done with that altogether. Just the idea, do you have any input on that?
I agree that the two definitions have some overlap, but there are some differences that put you in one category or the other. So I see that
Help me, help me understand what those differences are, because I can't find them.
Yeah. It's, it's the, it's really the regular instruction, at least five days per week, except for holidays or a normal school year. A school of general education does not include school, special education, or daycare facility. Those words is the interpretation of that by planning staff is a typical general, general education, K-through-12 curriculum. That is that interpretation, a typical five-day-a-week school.
It, it doesn't, okay, I'm looking at the wrong letter. I, I can't see where it says K-through-12, five days a week.
If you look, if you look at the, I would, I'm, let me see if I can pull this up. It wasn't working too well, but let me see. In the staff memo, I put the two definitions. I don't know if it's going to work. It was being finicky.
And, and I'm trying to help here. I'm not trying to dive in too deep.
I understand.
But if I can't, I'm thinking maybe nobody else really can.
So it's, it kind of goes onto two pages, but the two definitions are in the staff memo. But really, I would say the biggest, I would say that this part that I highlighted here is probably the, the biggest difference. And like I said, the interpretation of that is where you get put in And like I said, the interpretation of that is where you get put into that K through 12 typical curriculum. Whereas a school of special education based off of the definition seems more like, I'll say, topic-based, or more of a subject, or an interest. You know, you have the instructional type of schools where dance, gymnastics, that kind of realm. And then vocational, technical schools, those are more specialized uses. That's the differences.
Could be.
But I don't disagree that they're, they're difficult to determine. This is our, this is every day in the planning department.
Okay, so you guys are smarter than I am. Now, based on just what you said, that means that, based on what I just heard, that means that special ed-, special education wouldn't meet five days a week. Because you said that's the realm of general education. So does that mean that special could not meet five days a week and could not be K through 12?
I, I don't, I think...
That was rhetorical in a way.
I don't think that it, I don't think it eliminates them from meeting however many days they want to, but...
Then why are we here?
And, and I would add...
Yes, ma'am.
Remember, this code is from 1990, right?
Right.
And that's not our fault, by the way.
So when we hear business school, secretarial school, this is all in the definition. There were specific schools to learn specific things. This was a tier point of combining. Maybe it's time to combine it, something we can look at in the development code.
I didn't mean to take that too far.
This was to separate parochial, like the churches, parochial in public schools from those types of specific subjects.
Just to piggyback what Mr. Vessi said, you know, it's, you can fit the definition of ju- because I don't know where you got the, the definition of special education. That's something that was made up by the city? Or that's something that's made, that is defined in the, in the statute? I think it was made up. I guess what we're saying is, why do we overcomplicate these uses when it could've just changed the definition of school instead of special education or school of education, which would encompass education of itself? Now, personally, personally, I was surprised that it would be a permitted use for a highway business and not a conditional use because of the requirements that we may look at for conditions to make sure that, you know, you just don't throw a school on a 19, which is a great F road, to put a school without, without having some, you know, drop-off, drop-off, you know, access points, et cetera, that, that we could require that, that make a school's footprint a little bit more designed to safe harbor the kids that go to the school and not having them access to a 19, a real terrible 19 corridor. So, you know, I just surprised that we would look at this as a permitted use and not a conditional use. And, and, you know, if, if condition, you know, I, I just have a problem making it a permitted use in general. So, that being said...
And I just wanna add, I mean, because the code not being updated in 35 years is not something I would be bragging about, because that is not our problem. And that's kind of what was to my point, is that it's being updated now, so let's do that. Let's not cater to, and it's no offense against a future applicant, because this is the process that is being, that is not being basically pursued properly now. So to throw back that, well, this is a 35-year-old code, is not our problem. And, and it's not something that we should just be like, oh, well, it's old, so we should just update it because somebody asked it. That is something, no, just let me finish. That's something that we need to fix on our own, which is, I, that's what I was trying to clarify earlier, is being fixed now, so let us finish that before, because otherwise we're gonna end up with a patchwork of, of these things that don't fit. And again, this, other places don't have a special and general education. I looked, that's how outdated it really is. So why don't we fix that first? Because it does seem like it's a little unclear as to why this is needed, because special education doesn't say you can't pick up five days a week. So what are we doing here? Because again, this is an amendment that will affect all of 19 and Tarpon Springs, not just a potential future applicant.
So fixing it, fixing it right the first time and going through this process, you know, if it's missing in our, our long-term goal, that obviously if we didn't think of it, you know, it's brought before us now, that it's something that can be addressed to get it right once instead of trying to patchwork it in, so...
And I can, if I can just piggyback off of what you were saying previously, this is for your consideration and recommendation. If conditional use is the board's, you could make, your recommendation could be as a conditional use as well. So I just wanted to let you know.
And that, that could include, that actually can include the, the special education as well, as far as our recommendation.
Um, well...
Even though it's a permitted use now?
Well, the amendment is for that section, so you could, you could technically, I guess, adjust that as well. It's in the same code section.
Based on these comments, does the board have any other questions? The staff, before I open it up, the public comment?
There's no applicant.
There's no applicant. Okay.
I realize that it might not be pertinent, but what's the timeline for the school thinking that they're gonna even wanna move over there? I, I wouldn't know that answer, I'm sorry.
Okay, I think we've beat this thing up enough. Any public comment, please? Please state your name, your address.
My name is Cindy Stewart. I'm the pastor of the Gathering. Our address is 39918 US 19 in Tarpon. And I just wanted to make a brief comment. Thank you so much for all your information, and this is new for us, we're learning with you guys. But we've been in Tarpon for 13 years now. We have a passion for education, for families, for education. We've had a college, a two-year college, since 2014, which we've graduated 62 students from. And we've known since the beginning of our conception that we would eventually have a K through 12 school. And we felt like this is the right time. Our church is growing, we have families that are interested in being a part of the school, and we just felt like this was the time to start it. As to your question, when are we gonna start it? We have to get all of our ducks in a row before we start anything. You know, we've done all the process with the Board of Education, with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement. You have to get fingerprinted, there's a lot of governmental requirements, and that's the process we're in, as well as the approval of the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. So do you have any questions that I could answer for you? I know it's just a comment, so maybe it's not a question thing, I don't know.
I don't think it's a matter of questions for you. I, I think it's just a matter of, of us as a board making sure that, that, you know, when we look at, at, at something like this as a permitted use, you just have the right to apply. With a conditional use, it allows the city to, to put conditions in the operation that would protect students, for example, or, or, you know, those are the things that, that would be taking away from, from having conditions put in place. And I think it's important, whether it's this school or any other school, that, that conditions be put in place that, that would, would be consistent with, like you, like you even said, requirements of licensing, et cetera, that may, you know, I don't know, a permitted use, but you just have, I think you have that by right to, to open up a school where conditions could be placed if it was a conditional use. So, but I appreciate anybody else have any comments to make. Okay.
My name's Keith Graham, and I live at 6235 148th Avenue, Clearwater, and I attend the Gathering in Tarpon Springs. I moved to Tarpon about two and a half, three years ago in 2022. I'm currently homeschooling all my children right now, my wife and I are. And one of us works, one of us schools kids, and we kind of flip-flop back and forth. We do this to protect our children, just our beliefs, what we wanna see taught and this and that. But just with the current environment of, you know, schools these days and just the world we live in, we find that smaller is better. And we just feel like our children would be more protected in a smaller environment with people we know that we've grown relationships with over the last few years. And I know that my family, amongst many other families, and only two of them are here tonight, but there are many of us that are looking forward to this school opening so that our children can have a safe education, a quality education that encompasses not only just K through 12 general education, but is gonna encompass the special learning, the coding, the, you know, all this, you know, vocational things that the kids wanna lean into as a, you know, monastery-type situation, you know? It's what they're leaning toward, they're gonna be taught in. And on, as well as our spiritual beliefs, our religious beliefs, those are gonna be incorporated as well. This is something that many people in the community desire. And, you know, it's not just Tarpon, we're gonna be coming from outside of Tarpon to this area because we desire this place to happen. And so we just, whatever the conditional permitted, whatever it is, it is in the best interest of the future generations of this area that this school happens. Thank you for your time and being here tonight. Excuse me.
My name is Elaine Kay, and I live at 5305 Peacock Drive in Holiday, just a hop, skip, and a jump above the county line, a smidgen, three miles away. And I, I'm part of the Gathering as well. I'm an educator. I was a math teacher and had an Indiana teaching license, still do have my Florida teaching license. Although now, instead of teaching, I'm serving as a hospice chaplain, mostly in Pinellas County, some in Hillsborough. But I want to attest to the fact of the educational ability and the degrees of the folks of the Board of the Gathering. So many of them have doctorate degrees. And I personally received a doctor of ministry degree myself last year, something I desired all my life. And so I can tell you, I can attest to their teaching abilities and their integrity and the quality of education that they provide and how much interest they have in children, that children develop to their potential and realize their dreams and use their imaginations for who they can be and how they can serve their families and their communities to the best of their abilities and then empower others to do the same. Thank you.
Any other public comment? At this point, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment.
Now, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion, if it would be agreeable at this time, to approve ordinance 2025-06 with the amendments proposed by the Planning and Zoning Department, but as a conditional use for the Highway Business District so that there can be further consideration and detailing down the road.
I would second that motion.
Okay. Discussion.
If I may, I'll...
Now, look, I'm gonna start at the end.
Forgive me. Pardon me.
Next. Discussion, discussion, discussion. Now, now you can talk.
Thank you. I think at first I applaud and am so happy to see so many residents of the community and maybe outside the community come and speak passionately about your belief in the new school. That being said, this is actually gonna dovetail nicely, is that no one is gonna disagree with your desire to have a, build a great school. That's admirable. It's about the location. And changing a long-established zoning rule that really is about safety. And that's what this board has to grapple with and the Board of Commissioners will have to grapple with. That's really what it comes down to. And this would be my comment, is I think this is a monumental change that should be taken extremely cautiously and carefully. Not that it's not a good idea, just because we can doesn't mean we should. And I shall, quote, forgive me, not ex parte, I'll just, golly gee. Generally, planning and zoning would say that building schools near highway poses significant risks and should generally be avoided. That's why it's not there now. Now, maybe this is a good location for that to be overlooked or something to be changed, but my...
That's what the conditions would be for.
Could be. You can't uncondition US 19 that you brought up as an F. And then perhaps if the school is allowed there and then they want public transportation or use, we've got kids on a, within a half a mile, arguably the most dangerous intersection in Florida, which is one of the most dangerous roads in the United States. Remember that red dot thing we had up there? People die there all the time. It's unfortunate. It's uncomfortable. But it is also the truth. So I don't know where that leaves us. We have motion and a second and some nice people, and it's, it's a tough situation. I struggle with, also with the words that said the city manager put forth that we needed to do this. And again, it's that proactive rather than organic need that also brings caution to what I'm, I'm seeing. Okay, thank you for listening to that comment.
Thank you. And actually, Mr. Vessi is one of the reasons that I always go back to. So planning and zoning is there's a comprehensive plan, right? And then there's the land development code, right? But they go hand in hand, and often they'll say, oh, that's zoning, that's the code. It's no, but that's all a bunch of malarkey, okay? Because they go hand in hand, the plan and the zoning. And, and again, I wanna second, thank you so much for coming out. And this has absolutely nothing to do with, with you and your church and everything. And what you are asking for is 100%, you're just doing what you're supposed to be doing for yourselves. And all of my passion and my, you know, what I'm feeling is because, again, I have to be the bad guy because of the process. And this is not how we conduct, this is not good governance, what's happening right now. And I'm not blaming the staff, even though I sincerely am giving them a hard time. It comes from the top. And again, it's, you've been here for 13 years, right? And there's a lot, it's, it's not just you, there's, there's, there's just a flow of things coming down that we have to just consider now. And again, it doesn't, it's not about you, but because you're here, again. So what's, what's happening right here, my, my main concerns, first of all, are just zoning, is that it's a conflict between zoning policy. So right here, like, the Highway Business District is supposed to be for auto-commercial. It's not supposed to be day-to-day because it's US 19. There's a reason it's zoned that way. And the land development code is part of the zoning, that you cannot separate them. So by saying that, you know, basically what you should be asking for is a rezoning. And what, and Renee, the director, who's not here, basically said, "That's insane, because you can't ask to rezone a highway business." So her only alternative to appease the city manager's request, you know, from you, because he's trying to be nice and say yes to absolutely everything, is to say, "Oh, well, let's just change this so that we can do that," right? Because the staff has to do something, they can't just not respond to this, to their boss. So, but her, like currently, you know, there's a reason that we do have these, these codes, and I'm not gonna listen to, "Oh, well, that's been it for 35 years and we haven't changed it," because that's just a cop-out. I'm not gonna listen to, "Oh, we haven't done anything for 35 years, so then that's why we have to do this." Secondly, again, this is the most dangerous part between MLK and, MLK and Closterman. There are kids at night, they speed down there, there are accidents. It's one of the deadliest areas, and it's also one of the most congested areas in Tarpon Springs. Don't let anybody fool you that the congestion doesn't start after Tarpon Avenue to where they put those apartments. It starts way back before Closterman and in between Closterman and MLK. So putting a school bus stop there is insanely dangerous. And so that's where this is coming, because I do, I see all these adorable kids here, you know, and I, it's not safe for them to be on either side of 19. No one should ever cross US 19. No school bus should be stopping there. The only school buses that stop on 19 are to pick children up. But now we're gonna be dropping them off is like insane in the most deadliest part of, of town. And we don't have, Tarpon doesn't have much of Tarpon. We don't need to be subjecting our kids to that. And again, it's nothing to do, you know, with you. But the other thing that I haven't, you know, what's happening right now is that this, there's an, there's an integrity to the process, you know, in what we do here and what the department, the Planning and Zoning Department does. And this is kind of backward. And this is kind of backwards, right? Because you're all here tonight, but you're not an applicant. And so when I asked, is the applicant gonna speak, it was a little bit of a joke, because you're not an applicant, right? It's just, but it seems like you are. So what's happening is that you've requested this change, the change is coming, so it has now compromised the quasi-judicial process that would further come from our, from our proposal as a conditional use, because how could we say no to you then? You're the whole reason that we are even apparently, is a necessity, right? So, again, I don't like being the bad guy here, but it has nothing to do with, you guys are just following the process, you did exactly what you're supposed to do. You're, I mean, and you brought everybody out, which, you know, and I'm glad even Mr. Pappas stayed to listen to another, to your proposal, right? So it has, it's not a personal thing, and I, you know, and again, no one asked if I looked at any outside research, I have watched, you know, some of, you know, your sermons and things like that. And we're a very religious city, we just celebrated Easter yesterday, so it has nothing to do with that. Those questions I was asking was because I just didn't find that word in there, and again, it was just unclear as to what this distinction was. It has nothing to do with that, I want to make that entirely clear, we have tons of religions in this city. It has everything to do with this process, and I don't want it compromised, and this is setting a very dangerous precedent down the road, because, you know, imagine not being you and somebody else coming from something else, and then we make this, I mean, it almost passes a permitted right, which I still think we have to hear, but if we didn't, then you'd just be, you'd just be in like that. And I can promise you that that is not what came from the director, and when I, again, this is not a knock on staff, because what staff feels is, is pressure to accommodate a new management style, which is happening right now. So this is not the first time it happened, we're seeing this come down the line, and in, in the past, you know, we look like a bad guy, because it's looking, it's like, it's not personal. So it's just a dangerous place, and as Mr. Vessi said, it is a, it is, it is a monumental change, it is huge change, even though, and it's not your fault, you're just saying, however can I get this done, can you make it happen for me? But if it can happen naturally as it is under special education, I don't see why it can't. And if it can't, then there's a problem there. And again, after 35 years, now that we're finally amending the code, which apparently we're, it sounds like we're a little bit behind on, we need to get that done first, because we spent about, almost a half of a year doing the comprehensive plan, which again, goes hand in hand with the code, which the staff deals with, because we're not qualified to do that, until now. So what I'm saying is, if that's a problem, which we've identified, let's let them fix that, and maybe you can work under the special education anyways. So, again, I'm really just talking about an amendment, I'm not technically talking to you, but you're here, so let's face the reality. But again, this is, the process has been compromised by the way that this has been proposed to us, and it's like a reverse engineering of how it's supposed to work. So when I say no tonight, it's not anything about to do with you, it's just the process, and I hope that we can figure out a way to get it, get it done, which doesn't compromise the safety of our children and anyone, and our city in general on US 19.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I, I do have one comment, and maybe you could look at, entertain in an amendment to your motion, to not only to require that it be a conditional use, but also that special education section also be deemed a conditional use as well. That would be our recommendation, if you would put that into your, uh, motion.
Yes, I'd be happy to amend it to both definitions of both special and general.
Would there be a second to that amended motion?
I would again second.
Okay. Okay, any other discussion? Then I would call for, I would call.
I've, I've got a quick question. So, if, if the board was to approve this the way it stands right now, what department further oversees the safety of a school? It's not the Board of Education, but who's going to, who's going to see this, let's say there is an application down the road? Who, is it the Department of Transportation? Who oversees a safety issue of a business going in on something like 19?
I think that would be part of a site plan. I think that would be a part of a site plan to.
City would look at it?
Well, yeah, it would have to go through all the different departments if it was a conditional use to make, you know, and everybody would be entitled to their comments.
But the school would fall under the auspice of the state and maybe the county?
As far as licensing is concerned.
Do they get involved with the safety aspect of things?
That I don't know.
We don't know that answer. Okay. All right.
So we have, we have the, we had amended motion, we have an amended second. If there's no other discussion, I'll call for a vote. No, sir, it's closed. It's closed. Public, public, public comment is closed. So can I, can I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Weir. I'll vote no. Ms. Swenson?
Yes.
Ms. Early?
Yes.
Mr. Rockline?
Yes.
Ms. Francis?
No.
Mr. Vessi?
Yes.
Mr. Kuzkoudis?
Okay, uh, the next item is board and staff comments.
No comments tonight.
Okay, staff, okay, any board comments?
Thank you for, do you have any comments?
No, no problem, thank you for having me.
I, I, Chair, I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
The gentleman that came from Pappas.
Pappas.
I, I, the church, I apologize for seeing that the lot looked like it was an abandoned, tore down. That was inappropriate of me, and I hope you'll accept my apology.
I don't own it, so it's not taken heart.
Okay, I have no comments, the meeting's adjourned.